Thanks Joyce. Call to order this regular meeting of Board of Selectment of October 6. Set my timer, see how we do today. First order of business is to approve the minutes, or does anybody have anything to add to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Um. Oh. Apologies. So we need to approve the minutes, make a motion to approve the regular meeting of September 15th, 2022.
Second.
Minutes of. Was that a second? Sorry.
Yes, it was a second.
Any questions or edits?
None that I see.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Correspondents, you do not have anything in the folder, correct Joyce?
Correct.
Thanks. Public comment. Gonna scan the room. For virtual hand or an actual hand waving of your hand? Alrighty, moving right along. Tax refunds, we have that one tax refund from the last meeting. I'll make a motion to accept the tax refund in the amount of $519.96.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item is the 2223 Plan of Conservation and Development opportunity to submit comments prior to the November 10th public hearing warned by PMZ. Close my window. Helped a little bit. Hi Donna, you want to jump in?
Yeah, basically, the commission is just asking if you have any written comments on the plan of conservation and development. And if you do, to please submit them for their August 13th meeting. So that they can be addressed and then the public hearing will be held in November for final adoption. So it's the, according to state statute, it's not your, it's not a requirement that you approve the plan of conservation and development. It's just your responsibility to comment on it if you, if you have any comments. So they're looking for those by the October 13th meeting, which is next Thursday.
Okay. And I, I do want to give a big shout out to Donna, to the P O C D Subcommittee Planning and Zoning Inland Wetlands Glen Chalder. There were, this was definitely a, it takes a village. And they did a, a great job and it seems like it was a very purposeful and successful, positive process. Would you, Donna?
Yeah, no, I would. I mean, I, I think anytime you have an opportunity to work with Glen Chalder, you should definitely take it. I've never worked with anyone who can keep people on task. Like him.
And in such a, like lovely, positive way.
Exactly.
Always just, let's all go, keep going, moving forward and thanks.
Yes, yeah. He does it without hurting anybody's feelings, which is a true gift. So.
Yeah.
He's, he's a good guy.
Yeah.
Yep.
So does the board want to take this week? And see if there's anything that you want to provide for that next meeting? I'm I've had a bunch of reads of it. I did give a couple of comments in the last few months. So I'm I'm feeling really good about their product, what they have, you know, produced.
Yeah, I am as well. I mean, I've, I've given it a read and certainly nothing, nothing jumped out at me. That was, that was something I had to comment on, but if I could take a look again, I mean, if, if, if we do have something, so we're talking October 13th.
Right, which is a week from tonight.
Okay. Alright.
And so you would like on written comments, do you want, you want to set us a deadline? Probably don't want them on 13th. Right?
No, I mean, it, you know, it would be good if you could get them by Monday, Tuesday. This way Ty can put them in the public meeting folder since I won't be here. And and then they'll give the, it'll give the commission and Glenn an opportunity to review them. And then work on any changes if the commission feels that, that those comments warrant any changes.
Okay.
Great. Ty, did you want to jump in with anything?
No, I, I agree. I think it was done very, very well and I'm kind of excited to move forward. We're gonna get it out on the website with live links, working with Darlene on that. I think it'll be a really nice product for the town in the end.
Yeah. Great. Next is appointments. We have one appointment to make. And I'll put that in the form of a motion to appoint John Worthington to the Historic District Commission for a five-year term to expire 1/31/27.
Second.
Fantastic. And Joyce, John desires to do this, do another term?
Yes.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Hi Jen. Next is the recommendation from the assessor Jennifer Dubraye for the vendor to, for the picking of the vendor to conduct the reappraisal and revaluation for the October 2023 grand list. Jen, you want to jump in here?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, sure. Vision came in, the lowest bidder. I only had two bids anyway. So I currently use Vision for the Kama system. We've done the revals with them for many years now. And I feel very comfortable with that bid price and with that company.
I'm ready to roll. We just got back from doing some field work and I figured.
Okay. And just a reminder to folks, if you're not speaking, if you can just remember to go on mute so that we don't get any extra vocals in the background. Jen, do you need a, a motion from us?
I guess just to make it formal, a motion to accept and the recommendation. I think that was done in the past.
I'm moved.
Yeah.
Vision is good.
I will. Joyce, is that enough of a motion for you?
I assume he's accepting the recommendation of the Jennifer Dubraye?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. I'll second that motion. Thanks Jen for the, the work on this to get the RFP out and get it processed through. It was sort of a, a non-event when we did the opening.
It is. It's a lot of work ahead of it. It's a lot of work during it.
Yeah.
There'll be a lot of work cleaning it up, you know, finishing it up. But just the next step now is to get the contract out to them.
And so when would their work start?
Probably not till spring, not till after I file this current grand list. So probably March, April, next year, I would assume.
And then how long is the, the project?
It's gonna go through probably the, well, the BAA meetings in March of 24 will be the end of it.
Great. Thanks. All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Main Street Noise and Traffic Subcommittee Second Report Presentation. Glenn, do we have Chris on? Are you gonna handle this presentation?
I, it was my understanding that Chris was going to be here, but if he is not, I can do this.
Do you want me to screen share the report?
Sure.
Okay. Give me one second. Everybody hopefully seeing the report will make it a little bit bigger. Alrighty.
So I hope you both had time to, to look at this. The Noise and Traffic Subcommittee, we've been meeting since the last time where we produced a report for the Board of Selectmen and this time we've been talking about enforcement primarily. And that, that first part of the report there again talks about what, what we think is happening with traffic here in town. We think it's a little bit heavier. We think some people are not obeying the laws. I know that, living on Lane Street, that is a fact. And, and we've been trying to find out, you know, trying to, to talk about ways that we could, we, we could help our trooper. We can help the town with enforcement and a lot was, a lot was talked about just what's, what's in the trooper contracts, you know, is there specific language in the contracts with us? With, you know, in terms of where, where the trooper should be, you know, we've talked a lot about, you know, on weekends. He has been at Bull's Bridge and, and the Falls, but, but is there, is there anything in the language? And, you know, and we can't talk about where specifically the trooper would be all the time. But do, do we as a Board of Selectmen have a say in, in, in how much time is, is, is the trooper involved with enforcement in town, especially during high, high traffic days? Saturdays and Sundays in the summer, for example. Do we have any say in that at all is, is what we have, we've talked about? The members of the committee did note that recently, just anecdotally, there have been, there have been stops in town. I have noticed that a few, I'm assuming speeding stops, but I've seen people pulled over in town on the north end of Main Street more, more often. And so, you know, and then, and then the noise pollution part, you know, how, how often do, you know, does anyone ever get pulled over for, for noise pollution? We do have a lot of, of, of noise with various cars and motorcycles. We talked about a decibel meter. If, if the trooper has a decibel meter or not, you know, could we provide one? Is that, is that feasible? Is that something we can do? So, so we did talk about the noise aspect as well. And then going down. Yeah, we talked about the, the, the three-year contract of, you know, with the state police. Does it provide specific Board of Selectman oversight or input? You know, how much input do we have in this? I've, I've never seen a contract personally. Jean, you probably have, but you could, you could probably answer, answer that more than I can. And so that is in there as well. Let's see. I think most of this is more of the same. And, you know, just in, in, in summary, down at the bottom. I, I think the committee, the, the committee feels that something needs to be done. You know, that, that we think that enforcement is, is key to this. Perhaps a constable program we could look into. There, there, you know, I know other towns have them, some have had them and then dropped off. I don't know how much exactly a constable program would, would, would need. I've looked at some, at some funding and some budgets at other towns. But this could be something that we could, we could look into more forcefully. There is the, there is the talk of the SRO. We'll talk about this later. And how, and how an SRO could overlap with, with, with the needs as seen in the Subcommittee, but I think the Subcommittee feels strongly that, you know, that plan for the SRO would not cover enough time needed for the town, especially in the spring and in the fall, when an SRO would be at the school. At Kent Center School. So, so I think that, that's why the committee would like to look at a, at a constable program. And I think that's, that's the most of it. I don't know if any other member of the committee is here, if I'm missing anything big, but, but that's what we've been talking last number of meetings.
Great. Thanks. Rufus, do you want to jump in or comment, thoughts? Can you hear me Rufus?
Yeah, I just went on mute for a minute. My phone was ringing.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I can't, because I'm screen sharing, I can't see people's faces right now.
You know, I I, I don't think we can overstep a contract to put in specific language. I think we could go for input. You know, I, I went and talked to Andrew directly. They have decibel meters. They are trained state police, you know, they can do that. It is a very complicated process. You can't just pull somebody off on Main Street and do it there. You've got to take them off the main drag. It's, it's very time consuming, but you know, the troopers do have decibel meters and they are trained. So I don't know whether number six at the end is necessary, but and I think that's why, because of the complexity of trying to, you know, stop somebody and get them moved off out of, out of the stream of traffic into a quieter location to, to do a proper decimal, decimal meter reading. It's probably why they don't do it very often. You know, because it is very time consuming and stuff like that. But I, I, you know, I, I can definitely see asking for, you know, input from the board for, you know, they, you know, if we have concerns and that they may or may not just be, you know, road concerns, it may be other, other types of concerns that, you know, different types of the year where we want the trooper, if we continue with them to, to be in certain places or be aware of certain things that are going on. But I, I, I think that throughout the traffic's getting heavier. I think for whatever reason, we're back to sort of the pre-COVID rush, rush, rush mentality, you know, people are more aggressive and who knows why. Thank you for putting in very thorough report.
Thanks. That was a team effort and the group did a lot of good work. I want to thank them as well. And just, you know, you know, if Trooper Fisher needs additional assistance, if, if, if he needs someone else, you know, it's, it's it's gonna require funding of some nature, you know, whether, whether we look at funding that's a lot or funding that's a little bit. If someone else is involved, it's going to require funding. That seems clear to me. But I think it behooves us to give the town options for that. It behooves us to give ourselves options for that. And, and if that isn't an option, I, I mean, if an option is not to fund another person in some way, shape or form, then I think we need to give you know, I, we need to give, I don't know, some assistance somehow to, to Trooper Fisher. We need to, we need to help him somehow with the resources he has. And I see later on in the meeting, we are, you know, we're talking about the traffic report. I'm assuming the first one. You know, we could talk about pylons later on, but but whether it's slowing traffic down in, 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 in Main Street with, with, with certain pylons in the crosswalks. Like to talk about that later. That's a help certainly in, in downtown, but that's not going to help the speeders on this, the south part of town or on Route 7, as we've seen before. People are speeding and, and, and we have to try to, try our best to stop that. And it's not an easy thing to, it's an easy answer, I think. So.
Yeah, and I appreciate the work that you all did. I watched your last meeting and that was good to, to sort of see where you were headed with the report. There are, you know, a number of things that I do want to just clarify in the report. So the resident trooper contract is a two-year contract. It's never been a three-year contract. They, they write two-year contracts, so I'm not sure where that may have come from. So just to, you might want to make an edit on that. And the the our sort of participation and this, you know, there was a Waterbury Republican article that was very dramatic and provocative and said that, you know, a couple of the other, there were people quoted saying that the towns have no say in these programs. And my experience for the last three plus years is not that experience at all. Almost every day that Andrew is on tour, on duty here in Kent, he and I are having generally a face-to-face conversation, if not a phone call at some point during the day. Many days when he's not on tour, we're having phone calls and being in communication, whether it's a North Kent issue or just, you know, other operational things that he thinks that I should know about and have visibility on. So we're in very, very regular communication and during a storm or during, you know, if there were, you know, if there's any I got a three phone calls from him at four o'clock in the, in the morning week and a half ago, when there was an untimely death in town. So he, he is very communicative and he is very, he very much collaborates with me and makes sure that I am knowing things that I need to know. As far as the contract, you know, we're writing a, the, the state police desk is writing a contract is, you know, presenting us with a contract for their service and their service is, you know, is this cadre of, you know, this sort of menu of, of services and they state right up at the top of the the contract that they are, that we are giving them authority over law enforcement. And that's part of what it is to be a resident state trooper town. Now, does that mean that, that Andrew just goes about his business and, you know, the wall is up and, and he comes and goes? Absolutely not. I also have regular conversations with Lieutenant Pearson, who is for all intents and purposes, the, the supervisor of the resident state trooper programs through, out of Trupel. He wears many hats, but we had a lengthy conversation. I sent him this report so that he could review it. I sent it to Andrew and we had a, a long conversation about different pieces of this report. He and I talk regularly about mult, many, many different issues. And they're always working with us. We met, I, I know I briefed you all on this a couple of months ago when we met with the Washington and Warren for Selectmen with Lieutenant Pearson and another I think he was a sergeant from Trupel about like Warhamog, the, the speed issues over there. And, and through that conversation, we talked about sharing a an occasional trooper that would spend some time here doing speed enforcement, sometime in Warren doing speed enforcement, sometime in Washington doing speed enforcement. So there's those collaborative efforts. What also grew out of that was, and also grew out of this and Andrew's concern and Andrew's limitation of he's one person. They did a multi, I think it was two weeks where they had, and everybody knows this because everybody saw them. And I think it was like the previous two or three weeks, a lot of troopers running speed enforcement at the north end of town, at the south end of town, a couple of other places, sort of in the, the village hub. I got pulled over. My son got pulled over. I did not get pulled over for speeding. I got pulled over for, for a different issue. So they are very reactive and cooperative and collaborative in, in trying to fill the needs that, that we have. First light also, just so that everybody's aware, they, they got a grant, a federal grant. And so they were able, they used that federal grant money to hire an additional trooper. So that took the relief valve off of Andrew on some of the weekends during the later part of the summer. So that person was doing speed enforcement in and around town, also checking the North Kent Road. So it's not a one and done relationship. It's not a, you know, we have Andrew for the time that we have Andrew and that's it. But that said, the, what we grant them in our contract is the authority to know police operations. I know a lot about law enforcement just from my experiences, but I don't know police operations. I have, I have no business running police operations. The lieutenant, that's what he does and that's what we get, that's what's built into that contract. And that, that's the, you know, we trust that they're the largest police force in the entire state. They have the largest number of resources and assets available to them. And because we belong to the largest police force in the entire state, we have access to those resources and assets. And we, we trust them and we work with them to make sure that they're, they're bringing us those resources and assets as we need them. So in the, you know, if we were to say, well, we want to, we want to, we want the board to have oversight over scheduling. Right. It's, it's sort of a I, I wouldn't recommend it. Plus, we are, these are unionized employees, so they get breaks, they get vacation, they get sick time. If somebody gets injured, we automatically get another trooper. We don't have that, we wouldn't have that whole, so that's also part of what Lieutenant Pearson does. He's, you know, in a bigger picture for the entire troop area. He is moving around all of the, the assets and resources, human resources plus non-human resources. So that's part of what is built into that contract, the sort of more provocative commentary about we have no say is simply not my experience. We have a great working relationship with, with our law enforcement partners at the troop. And I want to continue that. I think it's, I know that it's been, it's been, we make progress. We, in rural USA, the way that you sort of see how your law enforcement, you know, is law enforcement working here is our, what's happening to our crime rates? And our crime rates are, are we have a trend line that's very flat. When you look at the constable concept, once we take on a constable by statute, we become a formalized police department. And some things that come into play, we have to by law. It was a public act that I think was just passed this past session. Regardless of size, we have to have the same accreditation as the Hartford Police Department, as the Fairfield Police Department, as the New Britain Police Department. Whether we have one constable or 101 police officers. So we have to apply for and get this accreditation. It has to be maintained. There's obviously a lot that goes into this accreditation. I can't It has to be maintained. There's obviously a lot that goes into this accreditation. I can't remember what it's called. Another big piece, there's a, there's software for maintaining this accreditation and it runs about twenty-three thousand dollars for subscription, for an annual subscription. And that tracks accreditation, attracts everything that that's required in that accreditation. The big pinch point. One of the big pinch points for me is the body worn camera issue. So as a formalized police department with a constable, we would now have to that, that constable would be, would have to wear a body cam and all that data. And you are talking about terabytes and terabytes and terabytes, massive, massive amounts of data that we have to. First, we'd have to write policies and procedures for the data. Then we have to house the data, we have to store the data. We have to be able to appropriately organize that data so that it is available to the public in a way that the public can consume it should they FOI that data. And this is all law. This is not stuff that's a good idea. So you're talking about a, probably an FTE that would have to be in charge of the, the data for the, the body cams. We'd have to have a backup body cam. We have to have multiple redundancies put in place for all this data. So putting one constable in place is not just a person and, you know, a weapon and a Kevlar vest. It's, there's a lot to it.
No, I, I don't dispute any of what you just said. So I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say a few things. You know, I, I know you and you and Andrew work very well together. You're always in, 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 you know, you're always in communication. Andrew's been great with me. I mean, he's been very open. He's, he's talked about the issues with me as well. He's been fantastic, I think, for for this town. What I, I, I think, you know, from my point of view, you know, working with the committee, on the committee and with you all here is in terms of this report, you know, is there anything we can do to make Trooper Fisher's life easier? In terms of enforcement, i- is there, is there any possible way? And a constable program was just something we did look at. I mean, I've, I've, I've looked at other towns, you know, Washington, for example. I, I don't know anything more than that, that it, that it does require a lot of work. I would just like to know just specifics, you know, could, could, could we contact Washington and say what exactly is required for a constable program?
Yeah, definitely reach out to Jim.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely. I would just lo- love to have that, you know, just, just in, in the Google Drive, just, just, just to digest it. Because this committee and other people in town have asked me about that, actually. So, so this is something that some people are definitely interested in. I would just love, love data in front of us to, to, to really look at to see if something like this is feasible. But, but it, but in the end, it's, it's just really, i- it's all working together, you know, we're, we're working with the troop, working with, with Andrew. And and working with people to try to make this as as efficient as possible. So. So, yeah, if a- any and all information about about enforcement is, is, would, would be great.
Yeah, so the lieutenant actually said something to me when we were, because we were going through this, you know, very linear sequential. And when we got to the enforcement piece, he, he, I had sort of this epiphanic moment. He said, it is really important under, to understand that writing tickets is not the enforcement. The court system and what happens with those tickets is the actual enforcement. And he, he sent me to somewhere where we can actually look up the like the, for Ken, the court that is, that covers our area. We can actually get data of, of the outcome of tickets that go through that court system. And, and from what he said, a lot of tickets get gnawed, which means they, you know, get basically adjudicated to, to nothing. And so it's, it's not the law enforcement that is letting down everybody who's abiding by the law, because I did take a little bit of issue wherein right, like out of the gate, you guys said traffic laws are not being obeyed. It's that simple. I do have to stand up for the, you know, it's probably ninety-six, ninety-seven percent of the population that do actually follow. I follow the traffic laws. Glenn, Rufus, I know, I, I'm sure everybody on this call. They follow the traffic laws. So it's, it is, that was a little tough nut. I did want to push back a little bit on that. But it was interesting that he said the enforcement, he said Andrew writes a ticket, one of the other troopers write a ticket. All they're doing is documenting a violation of a law. And, and giving the, the violator the documentation and the punitive outcome. But it's the court systems that, that are gnawing a very high percentage. So I'm, I'll look into this because it's interesting to me to know what's.
I'll say this as a rebuttal to that, too. I, I, I believe, I believe in there. But also, if, if I'm, if I'm another you know, driver and I see, you know, if I see someone stopped occasionally, you know, maybe not often, but, but if I see, if, if, if I see someone stopped. I don't know if that ticket is going to be, you know, if anything's gonna happen to that ticket or not, but because I'm, I'm, I'm a, I'm a driver.
Right, it can be a deterrent.
Going to be a serious deterrent. And, and the, and the group really, really stressed that, that, that if, if people do see people, you know, pulled over, that is a major deterrent, no matter what the court system does. But, but he, he, here's something, Gene, just to think, I, I, at a previous meeting, I forget which one. You said that I think there's something like, and I may be wrong with this, you said there's about two thousand, give or take events that
Requests for service, they call them annually.
I, I would love to know, like, I, I don't know if this is, we can get this easily, but request for service, I would love to know, like, other towns, you know, how, are we, are we, where are we in terms of request for service?
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure if that's in the, DESP just came out with their crime data. Did I send that to you all? I can send that to you all. They create a report annually for the legislature and for the public on crimes statistics. And I haven't dug into it yet, so I don't know if they have requests for service or if they just if they just report on like what the crimes are and, you know, in categories. So I can, I can send that along to.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of data out there for
Yeah, I would, I would, I would love to see like towns our size, you know, roughly how many requests for service is there and, and how many troopers service that town? That would actually be helpful to me in terms of enforcement and, and these.
Yeah, that's all they do. DESP does have, I can send a couple of links. DESP has with this police accountability bill that happened in two thousand twenty, I think it was, there was created out of that website that shares a lot of statistical information. You can look up and you can see every single town, how many troopers. If they're resident state trooper program or if they're not. So there's, there's a lot of data out there. I can send you a couple of links for sure.
Great, thanks.
And we did talk about the whole noise issue. And so there was, Torrentonary Health Department did have a, I don't know if the technical word is a noise ordinance, but they had a noise policy that that covered all of the Torrentonary Health Department towns, which, of which were one. And I think it was two thousand sixteen that they repealed that. So there, there no longer is that, not local, but, you know, from the health department aspect, that noise ordinance. So we would have to create a noise ordinance, appoint a local noise ordinance officer. And then, you know, create how we would locally ticket someone. And again, Glenn, like you were saying, it's, it's a comp, you know, it's not nearly as simple as even a, you know, speed enforcement radar gun. And there's a lot of different sources of noise. There is technology that's out there that in, where the two places where I've, the two products that I've seen it, one is in public trashcans. And the other is public benches. So there's this whole new movement of smart products. And just like our smart TVs do a lot of stuff that TVs didn't use to do and we all got sent up to turn the tile. These smart benches and smart trashcans, like for instance, the smart trashcan has built into it noise monitoring, sensors, air quality sensors that if you decide that this is how you would want to do it as a municipality, all that data is collected and it can be sent back in real time to a dashboard. And so you're actually looking at the data. And for, you know, our garbage cans are right on Main Street, so they would be, you know, I think that they would be located in a pretty good spot to be collecting some data. And then we would have the actual anecdotal data is great. And, and I, you know, that definitely speaks to me. I think it speaks to all of us, but I think it would also be great to to actually be collecting this data to say, hey, Torrentonary or Area Health Department, our noise data that we've been collecting for the last three months on Main Street is completely outside the, you know, the parameters that are acceptable for deep, for DPH, for, you know, all of the standards. And so how can we, you know, how can we do something? What, what do we do about that? But I think that we should think about using technology, passive technology, right? That costs us nothing in human resources. Right? You install the garbage cans, you have somebody here in Town Hall who can read the dashboard, but you're not it's not Andrew standing out there that we're paying, you know, DESP a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars for him to stand out on the side of the road and with a decibel meter collecting, you know, one person at a time, one motorcycle at a time. Collecting that information. It just seems inefficient when there's technology out there that we could use. They also, the trashcans are also designed with other sensors where I'm sure Rick has, Rick and the, the guys have picked up plenty of trash this time of year because the raccoons and animals get in there. They have sensors for when there's wildlife in the garbage cans. They sense when they're full. So that instead of going every week to see if the garbage cans are full, they only go when they get a notification that says they're meeting that limit. So they're using their time more efficiently to do road stuff or you know, moving around Bull's Bridge Road, Culverts, things like that. So there's, there's technology out there. There are also benches that do the same thing, that collect this, that are also, there's one at the library that has the wifi hotspot. So there's, you know, there's technology out there. Would be great to find a grant, maybe do a pilot program with, you know, two of the trashcans or do something with a couple of benches. That would be a way to to tell this story and, and grants that we would apply for that we could maybe pay for a noise enforcement officer. Those, those grant givers, federal, state, they want to see data. Stories are nice, but they want to see data. So maybe that's something that we should, you know, think about for the upcoming budget season.
Good. Yeah, I mean, I, I think this is a discussion that just needs to continue. And so where do we want to go with this now? Should, should the subcommittee still, still meet? Do you, you want us to edit this, this document? Definitely from the three-year to the two-year contract, at least.
What's the sense of the committee? Do they want to? Are they, I mean, they did, I should have had the charge up. Let me find the charge. Give me one second.
The committee did, did, did talk about the possibility of disbanding. I think we felt that we did, we did enough work with the previous report in this one. They, they would like to see us, us keep moving on some of these things, or at least keep talking about them. And, and again, I would like to bring up the other report again later on in this meeting, but Yep, so I think whatever you think.
So the the charge was to make recommendations to the board of selectmen regarding noise and traffic issues and concerns.
Which we have done.
Which you have done. So I kind of feel like it's now in our hopper to move forward with ideas as we head into budget season, move forward with, you know, looking at grant opportunities, look, look forward with, how do we want to? You know, what are the, what are the next steps for us? Is it to do that gathering data? Is it to, you know, do a pilot with Andrew to see what, what he comes up with when he's out there? Collecting, you know, doing noise decibel work? And is that a good use of his time? So I think there's a number of things that we have to sort of mull over and figure out where we want to, where we want to head with this.
Well, maybe I mean, let's, let's, let's keep the subcommittee going for a little bit. We could meet one more time. They could, they can watch this, this, this meeting and we could, we could amend our report a little bit or a lot, depending on what, what we talk about. So let's keep them together and then we'll, we'll, we'll come back.
Okay, and then I will get you the twenty twenty-one crime statistics. And there's a couple of links for some state police crime information and state trooper program information.
Yep, that would be helpful. And, and any and all things you can find on a constable program in a, from a nearby town.
Oh, right, and I'll call Jim.
Yep, that would be helpful.
Gene, you might as well send any of that stuff to me as well.
Oh, of course.
Information.
For sure.
Sure, Rufus. We want you involved here.
I know, this committee work, you know.
Great.
Alrighty. Twenty twenty-three Boris Leckman regular meeting schedule. So it's the time of year where we need to figure out what we want next year's meeting schedule to look like. While a lot of work. I will, I have to admit. The, I think the two meetings a month, I hate to even say this out loud, but I'm going to admit that I think the two meetings a month have been useful. I feel like our more regular touchpoints every two weeks is better than just having a once every thirty days. I was talking to somebody today who wasn't going to make, be able to make the meeting because they work and they said these four o'clock meetings are, they don't work for working people. And we, when we set the schedule, we were trying to sort of thread that needle of being able to do a more daytime meeting, but then also do a more evening time meeting. Another pinch point for the discussion is that our meetings are always on Thursdays and that's our town treasurer's Cornwall Day. And I, I, it, there have been many times where it would have been great to be able to have her on hand to walk us through something, especially obviously when we get into budget season. So then is Darlene on the call? We have to, that's due in November, correct?
It's, it's due to be filed by the end of the year. So as long as, but it has to be, you have to take into consideration what you make your date for your January meeting. So that's why it's just as easy to file it in November. It doesn't affect any of your regular meetings.
Okay. So just best practice, get it in November. So just best practice, get it in November. So. We don't have to decide tonight um. And so there's sort of a bunch of. Variables. Obviously, we have to be sensitive to all the other boards and commissions and they all, you know, have. Their meetings on their designated time, recurring times um. But let's sort of take a look at our calendars and try to really. Come up with a decision making at the next meeting so that we can just move this off and be done with it um. Considering. The other variable, this is like a twelve sided coin. The other variable is we is, you know, Joyce is the administrative, the. Clerk of the works for our meetings and um. You know, this is a, it's a hiccup in her day um. It's an extension of her day. She, you know, she works hard. Um, so the. Just being cognizant of that. So there's a lot of um variables and. Never a, you know, a perfect solution to anything, but if we can take the next couple of weeks and just sort of stare at. The town calendar, our our work calendars, our life calendars and um. See if we can come up with um at least one alternative. Um, that will try to suit the needs of. Of those, all those variables a little bit better. It's going to be tough, but um. I think we need to just sort of dig deep and see if we can figure out a a different solution, if that's how you all feel.
I'll I'll say this, um, you know, part of me would love to have one meeting a month like it has always been before. This particular board, but uh but I do like the fact that we do meet every every two weeks. We can get a lot done um. If we went to one meeting, I I really don't want four hour meetings. Um, you know, these can get up there, but at least. I don't I don't know if we've reached four hours on one of these, but uh but no, I.
Almost.
Almost.
There was one, was very close.
To the two times a month regular meeting, I think is, I think is fine. Um, exactly, four o'clock, not so good. Um, I can do that the rest of the year. Certainly, I could still do it moving forward as well, but it would be easier for me if I got off of four o'clock. Six thirty start for both of them would be much easier moving forward for me. If we needed a different day other than Thursday. I I I myself, I'll offer Wednesday. I could probably do Monday. I don't think we want to do Friday night, but um but I could I could do a Monday and I could do a Wednesday. I can't do Tuesdays. That's the one day I can't do.
Okay. So I don't think we need to spend much more time on this because we'll really sort of dig into it at the next meeting. Rufus, did you want to? Jump in on anything?
No.
Okay.
I'm probably more flexible than Glenn um. But uh I I do think that we need to consider. Joyce's uh, you know, I I don't like the idea of taking up two nights.
Right.
Out of her life, so I I think. I I like the idea that one is earlier, maybe, you know. I don't know, maybe we put that on a night where, like a Wednesday, who says we have to meet? The same night.
Right.
Meet on a Wednesday and a Thursday.
Right.
Or whatever, you know.
Right, and I'll work with that too, Rufus. If you don't mind, four o'clock, if it's easier for Joyce, I could make four o'clock work. I mean, that's that's not a, that's the deal breaker. Um, so, okay.
All right, so we'll. Come back to this at the next meeting. Um, old business salary review, I just did not get it together. Um, I know we were going to start with the assessor. I actually still have the tab open on the CCM. Data collection um website, but I just haven't, just haven't gotten there on it um. You know that there's something in the folder. Like the cog.
I would like to point out that cog has us um uh as selectmen. Working one hour a week. So our meetings have to be under two hours, just just to point that out.
Okay. Um, so I will do my best to get that um CCM. Survey pulled for the next meeting.
If you could try to do that, like.
Do it.
And assessors do it this week and so that we have more time to look at it.
Hmm, yeah. Um, next is seven point two assistant land use administrator job description.
So is this draft that came the same draft? As we got the first time from. Kai?
Yes.
Okay.
There's there's Je- Jean and I worked together on it. To make minor changes. She had some good recommendations to add the standard language, you know, that involves, you know, any other. You know, duties that might come before you, so it doesn't limit the position to just what's on that paper. Um, also, she suggested to put something in about the Google Suite, but other than that, it was re-formatted to the town's format. Um, and it's pretty much otherwise the same.
Okay. So I I would like to make a motion to accept. The town of Kent job description for the assistant land use administrator as edited.
So I'll second that.
Now we can have discussion.
Fantastic. Want to start us off, Rufus?
No, I think this is great. I think it's a very good opportunity for the town to take advantage of. Somebody who's overqualified for the job to who's interested in doing it and.
The job would be posted. For, you know, a certain amount of time as as we do for every job. So we're really talking about the job description. I just want to, you just have to be careful to not. We don't want to be unfair to anybody who wants to apply for the job. Um, so we have um. As a board during budget season, we um. In passing our budget and moving it on to the Board of Finance, and then when that budget. Gets approved by the Board of Finance and then it goes to the voters and they the voters approve the budget. We don't um, we don't approve a range. Where we we always approve a um either a salary dollar amount or an hourly rate. And I know that there are places that do do a range um. We in, we have not, we, again, what the voters vote on is a an hourly. Rate, and I think that there's a certain expectation that the voters vote for. An hourly rate and that's what they expect to be the hourly rate for that position for the year. Now, not to say that stuff doesn't happen and. Things can change um. But I do want the board to be aware of that. We, there's no other job descriptions that have a range. There's a um in the um. The CDL it for the union guys, for the DPW guys, they have a um. There's like a, what would you call that, Joyce's step? Would that be accurate?
Are you talking about when they first get hired?
Yeah.
So they come in two dollars an hour less, but yes, they progressively have to come up. So it is a stepping.
And that's part of the contract, right?
Correct.
I mean, I think I I don't see anything wrong with a range because. It would depend on the application process and who applies. Uh, you know, not everybody might have the qualifications to start it at the higher rate or. Some people might be overqualified and whatnot um. You you know, the the budget that people vote on is a guideline. It's not set in stone. It's a guideline. And so, you know, I mean, I think we've already looked, look at what. Happened with the park and rec. We had a applicant who. We had to, you know, change the the numbers midstream, more or less. Um, you know, that wasn't something that was approved by the voters, but they have. Um, you know, were. I I. Personally think that a range is fine. It gives it more flexibility. So. I I don't have a problem with that. What do you think, Glenn?
Uh, going back to the last meeting when we talked about this, um, there was some talk about um. You know, whether this position should be assistant or uh or if the word clerk should stay in the uh. In the terminology um. Uh, the, I mean, the both both the previous uh 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 updated version, that was that was an updated version along with this. Um, so I've got two updated versions in front of me. Have we seen a previous version of this that wasn't updated?
Oh, I can pull one up quick. Almost there. Can you see that an open Word document, Town of Kent Land Use Clerk?
I, where is this?
I have to actually hit the button that says share, sorry about that. I was already looking over at my other monitor.
Okay, so original virgin version not updated.
Correct. You know, if I'm scrolling too fast, let me um.
That was fine, right, for me, I anyway.
So the um. Ty, can you just help me remember the salient difference between this one and the proposed?
So I think in in my um first presentation, I actually highlighted the differences, what what had been added and what had been. You know, taken out. Um, yes, some of the the things are, you know, like creating packets. Um, that's not, that's not a practice that happens anymore. We've we've progressed past that. We don't use mail anymore. Um, and you know, some of the things that were added into the description were more um. Land use, you know, quality kind of work um that would be, you know, more um. You know, actually working with the regulations and um at a higher level. Yeah, I mean, it it basically, you know, calls for being able to, you know, understand the statutes and the reg- regulations and being able to, you know, step in and. Properly guide the public um if needed um. At that ki- at that level. Um, and kind of takes away some of the um more clerical things that really, as we're progressing, are not going to be needed. They're not needed now and as we move forward with technology, they'll be needed less and less and what you really need is somebody who is a higher level. Um, person to help.
Makes sense.
Be all set with the screen share, Glenn.
Could you back, go back to the top again, please?
Sure.
Okay, so no, no rate is there.
Right, that was, this is the old format.
Okay, I'm good.
That was a public act in, I think, twenty-one that um. Requires those, the salary or rate to um be included. Um, just from a. Uh. Overall, um. Where does this all fit with um? You know, what we have for other job job descriptions, we do have um. And we do have assistant assessor positions. Um, we do have assistant tax collector positions. Then on the other side of that, there is a social services assistant um position. Um, sorry, I'm going around the the building. There's a treasurer's clerk position. Um, so I I think we need to at least be thoughtful about um. What are we, what are we um creating when we do, when we create, if we approve this um? Job description, because it really, it's a subtle but distinct shift from a, you know, an. Administrative level person to now more of an assistant department head and is that. You know, something that's that is needed in in the office, in the in our town government. Um, so I think we should at least be thoughtful about that. And I do wonder if we should include um. It says fifteen meeting, fifteen hours per week plus um attendance at two meetings a month. Part of me thinks that we should just add in those hours because it's sort of piecemealing. It doesn't really give the true picture um. If you were to say, and you know, average meeting is ninety minutes. Then you add in another three hours, so it would be um. Whatever that would come out to, I can't do the math in my head right now, because another three hours a month, that's not three hours a week.
Right, and if if. You know, somebody sits through a four hour meeting, they should be paid for four hours.
Oh, they will be paid for four hours for sure.
This, the way it's stated is, you know, fifteen hours a week and then the other attendance. So maybe there's some weeks where they're getting fifteen hours and some weeks where maybe they get seventeen.
Right.
Or it might be an eighteen hour week. I, you know, that's more accurate and than trying to lump it all together.
Could could we consider this? Um, I would, I would like a little bit more time to digest all of this. Um, i- if if we could for the next meeting, get the original. Uh, the original document, you know, in in the drive, you know, we have this already and I haven't seen another. Uh, and a one of these other assistant uh uh job descriptions that you've talked about, Jean, if we could get not all of them, but even just one of them. I'd love to just cross reference all this and. And and come to some agreement. It, does that make sense?
Each department has its own individual. Needs. You know, and
True.
It's like the assessor, the assessor's assistant. There's language in there. So if they get past, you know, if they come in not having had certain courses, they would be getting at a look, start at a lower end of the range. And, and you know, so it's the same thing. This, this is basically the same thing. It's just not exactly in the same.
Right. But it's not a range. They, they're hired at a certain hourly rate and then included in the hiring agreement is if, you know, when they pass X course, they get another dollar.
Right. Which is something that could happen with this. I mean, you know, you get, you see who the applicants are. And then you've got applicant A who is enthusiastic and has the time, but maybe not the knowledge. And maybe they, you know, we decide to hire them at twenty-three, ten an hour. And if they do A, B, C, it will go up. You know, that, that's, that's what the range allows. If you have an applicant B who is experienced or whatnot, then, then you've got the opportunity to hire them at the twenty-eight, twenty-eight. So you know, job just, this should be, this is, there's some flexibility in here. You want some flexibility. You don't want in my mind, you don't want to tie yourself to a specific number or, you know, because you want to see who you, who applies. So.
Sure. I, I think there also is a certain expectation that if somebody's going and looking for a job and they find this job and they see that it's this, you know, it's this much and out for the hourly rate. Then that's a sort of a clear representation of, of the compensation that they'll be earning. So it's I, I see both sides for sure. So we do have a motion on the table. We can, Glenn, if you'd like to go, you know, to the next meeting and I'll get you these, the current one and a couple of the others that are similar. Probably the tightest thing would be to have Rufus or ask Rufus if he wants to withdraw his motion up to you. But we do have a motion on the table.
You have to withdraw your second first.
Do I have to withdraw my second?
It doesn't matter. I, I mean, I just, I wa- I want to move forward into the future rather than look at how we've necessarily been doing things in the past because I mean, as Ty pointed out, the job has changed. And so this is created by the department that wants a person to do this kind of work. I don't see why we're delaying it.
No, I, I mean, I, I understand that. I've heard that loud and clear as well, but, um, but I would, I would just like a little bit more time to look at this along with other, with other job descriptions.
Okay.
And I'll be willing to act on this next time without question. But, but it's, it's the screen sharing during a meeting, you know, I mean, if it's, again, if it's in the Google Drive, I'm cool. I mean, I, I got time to look at things, but it's, you know, it's just hard to wrap my brain around things sometimes when I'm discovering things, you know, it, well, not discovering, but looking at things in the meeting. And I know some of the I, I, I get this too, but, but just, you know, a, a, another good reason to have meetings twice a month.
So if I need to withdraw my second first, I will withdraw my second.
And I'll, I'll withdraw the motion.
That's going to send me down into Robert's rules tonight to figure out if that procedurally was proper.
Who knows?
Well, I'll find out.
I got it right over here. I can look up.
Discussion regarding town meeting for school resource officer and EMS staffing. So we know that we have two topics that are going to come up. Darling Joyce and I met and went round and round and round the, the calendar may poll. And based on all the different factors and triggers and statutory deadlines, the soonest that we came up with is that, is to do a town meeting on December second. And then do the referendum on December fifteenth. Did I get those two right, Darlene? I don't know why I'm yes, off the line fifteen, sixteen. It was, it is the fifteenth. Okay. Thanks. We need to huddle again to get the explanatory text worked out. Randy sent us back the legal note, the legal notice. Is that, would that be correct?
He sent back a a, a draft form of a legal notice, which we all disagreed with.
Right. And I'm waiting for a call back from him. There was, he, he drafted it where one, where the the SRO went to a referendum, but the EMS staffing allocation would be done at the town meeting, but it was, it was clear directive that both are going to go to a referendum. So we just need to get that cleared up with Randy. We'll come back with a legal notice. We need to work on the explanatory text. And move forward to plan it for those two dates.
Is there a time?
I'm sorry, Glenn, go ahead.
Is there a time for those, those dates or unclear?
A time of day.
Time of day, yes.
Um, they're generally at seven o'clock. I'm sorry, the town meeting is generally at seven o'clock. And then the referendum is a noon to eight, correct, Darlene?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
So I don't know, Dar, Joyce, is there anything more to discuss? For tonight's purposes?
I think that also was part of my email correspondence to you was about just making sure that all the motions that all commissions have made have the same wording so that the intent of each board is exactly the same of what's being brought forward to the people at the town meeting and is being brought forward as the vote. So I did speak with Randy and he agreed with me that because we especially have time to get that corrected. We should make sure because unfortunately, even if it's just one word has SRO officer, and then now the motion includes what the town's part of it's going to be as far as including you know, using the individual during the summer for the SRO. Not all motions included that information. So I think that it's just tightening up, making sure not only the town meeting notice is correct in wording, but that we get every board with the same wording going forward. And we have time to do that, but we just have to make sure that maybe we use that.
Yeah, Randy and I did talk about that piece and he did, he, he did say that the that always, I'm just looking for the sheet of paper that, that the motions that were made were, were all in alignment, but we can definitely reconnect with him on that. Just cover all of our bases.
I guess it's different then. So we definitely just need that clarified because I spoke to him this afternoon. So I just, whether it's different way of asking the question, or if it's different information that was provided, I would just like to know that he reassured me that yes, if there's time to do so, that all motion should be the same by all agents.
Okay. So we'll definitely make sure that everything is lined up and correct and
Exactly. Yep.
Great. Seven point two COVID nineteen pandemic update. Um, we've, there's been an uptick in in cases, we have a lot more people coming in for tests. A resident, a longtime resident in Cornwall, Hill West. He had a, a large cache of home kits that were getting close to that used by date and he went from town to town in the northwest corner and basically dropped off. He dropped off for us probably a hundred home kits and we were getting, we were almost out. So big thanks to him. I sent him a thank you note. So that was great that we didn't have to go back out and purchase those because the supply chain and, you know, costs of those are both a little bit difficult these days. EV charging station, I don't have anything on this. I, I sort of, I haven't heard back from ever source. I'll, I'll keep beating the bushes on this. I do want to get the cost for replacing the one out here. And then obviously there's this other federal funding that's coming down from the federal highway administration. So being able to do some, you know, get some of those put in place would be great. And hi, and Donna, have you all been? Has P and Z? I know that you all had a draft of new regulations for EV.
Yep. Yeah. So that's before them this next Thursday.
Oh, great.
The proposed regulation that Glenn actually helped work on. So hopefully that'll be good.
Awesome. Flag policy resolution. It is in the the Google Drive. There's a very large hatch of no C M's outside of my window. There's a cloud of bugs outside right now. It's very strange and distracting. I do have to just change the date, obviously, so that reflects that we're passing this today, if that's the choice of the board. And I'll actually make a motion to adopt the flag policy with corrected date as presented. So this was as it was presented, then went out to town council, came back with their edits. And then just formatted into a town of Kent resolution. And I was able to get it to fit on two pages.
No, that's good. It's a very clean and it's, again, I'm going to say the, the line again, that, that I'm really interested in. It's near the end. Ceremonial and commemorative flags shall only be flags that represent the official day, week or month observances in the United States by presidential proclamation. I think that's very important. So, um,
I'm sorry, did we get a second on that?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm good with this.
Anything else, Rufus?
I was just looking at the comma after be it resolved. I don't know why it's there, but other than that.
If you want me to take that comma out, I will take that comma out.
I don't, I don't think it should be there, but.
I'm not a fan of the, the, the word that, but I'm, I'm not going to fuss over that. If you, I can take the, the comma out. I don't think we need to adjust our motion for that.
No, no.
I think Robert will be okay with that.
We should have done this before.
Fantastic. All those in favor of this resolution?
I, I.
Hi, thank you. Main street noise and traffic report. Are there, is one called number one and one call number, is there a distinction between?
Yeah, that's
I can't remember.
I one is enforcement. Well, let's see, hold on.
You don't see.
Yeah, this just, it's, it's just a second report. I think the first one probably just says first report.
All right, second report. Okay. So we'll, we can refer to them as
First and second, yeah.
First and second. So this would be the first, the, in this seven point six, I have heard very little from the DOT as I expected. I had an, an email from them maybe three weeks ago, asking me to confirm what we what we had laid out, what you all had laid out in that report as far as the speed limits that you were requesting for those four basically gateway speed limits to have them changed. I confirmed that back and that was the last I heard from them.
When was, when was that? And when's the last time you, you heard?
Probably three, three weeks ago, maybe more. I will I will loop around with them again, but they did say it's four or five months. Because it again, there, all of the different pieces and parts of that report go out to multiple different units within DOT. The pieces and parts all have to get reviewed and considered. And then they have to come back to someone and that someone has to be identified to be the person who conduct, you know, who asks for and conducts traffic studies and, you know, goes through the, the process that the DOT has to go through. So I will, I will try to get an update from them.
Okay. So yeah, so you, just to reiterate, you, you've sent that report to them, their
Oh, yeah, months ago.
Months ago, they're, they're, it's good. It's going to very
They warned me. They said it's going to be four or five months before we even get back to you. So.
So yeah, if you could please stay on top of them, the, the committee, you know, the, the committee just wants us to know here that, you know, a lot of work was done for this and everything and they they don't want it to slide through the cracks somehow, even if, you know.
With the DOT.
You understand where we're going. So, so
Oh, yeah.
You keep on top of them and that'd be great. And then they also wanted to talk to me about the, the pylons for the, the crosswalks. Where, where are we with that? Do we, do we still have them? Are we, are we going to try to do anything with those?
Rick, can you jump in on the crosswalk pylons? Obviously they can't go out before the, the project is wrapped here. Rick, do you have a second to come off mute? There we go.
Hello.
Hey, sorry about that.
Yeah. Worked on the encroachment permit. So when that comes back, then I would assume that it's going to be a little bit late for this year because it's snowplowing and stuff. We won't be able to leave them out then. But we should be all set to go for leaving them out twenty-four, seven next year. And then when the new crosswalk's done by the five and drama, I'll put in another permit for that one.
Okay.
Okay.
And all the pylons are in good shape.
I have to check up and where I know we have at least three of them. I might buy a couple more to do all of them with.
Okay.
And those are the impact ones that fold over and come back up.
Yep.
Okay. So great. So that's moving along and, okay. Yeah, the, the subcommittee just wanted to know if that was still ongoing. So, um,
I think we have enough issues on the streets right now. So.
Yeah, I've seen you out there, Rick.
Policy and procedure manual update. I don't have anything on this. I need to get back with the labor attorney through Karma. Just to get some sort of indication of how they can help us get this manual reviewed and in shape. So hopefully I will come back next, next meeting. Rooster noise complaint right to farm ordinance follow up. I had a great conversation with Mr. Victor Lewis and he he remarked that, so he is the complainant, I guess you you could say. He has been working really hard and he's been, he's been, I guess, doing a lot of back and forth with Donna, Ty, the Land use office, because he's, they're putting in what sounds like a pretty thorough screening. They're putting in fencing, they're putting in some sound panels. Ty, Donna, feel free to jump in here and fill in the gaps as far as what they're, what they're working on, on their side of on their property.
Go ahead, Donna.
He came in the other day and wanted to put up a very large fence, which meant that he would, it would be a structure, would need to meet setbacks. It meant that the fence would have to be thirty yards into his property line, from his property line. And so we kind of sat and brainstormed a little bit. And I think what he's going to do is put up just a regular six foot fence and then kind of soften the look on it with some giant arbividee and and that will kind of help a little bit with what he's seeing and and what he's hearing. So, and he was okay with that, you know. So, yeah, so we'll see what happens.
Yeah, and he was very, you know, very gracious and is really wanting to you know, be, you know, live with among his neighbor and and but also do what he needs to do to mitigate that, that noise. He did say that the neighbor with the chickens, they're moving their, the coop away from the property line to a slightly different location. So he's hoping that will also help with the noise where before it was sort of it was a straight shot. This is in a, in a spot where it can't, it doesn't just travel straight out. So he's hoping that will, that and the, you know, the mitigation that he's doing with the fence and the, the trees will make a difference. And he was, you know, he was very appreciative of. You know, I was trying to be sensitive to how much sort of hoopla had, had bubbled up about this and he was appreciative of allowing him to, to sort of, you know, sit on and, and handle the, the situation. You know, it's a, it's a balance. There was, there was a lot going on on social media. It was topic for people who I know out of state actually mentioned it to me for a couple of weeks. So, and we'll be in touch. I'm going to call the other neighbor maybe tonight and check in with them. But that's sort of where it, where it stands right now. And he was not of, he was not going to pursue, you know, making a presentation for changing regulations or trying to change any ordinance or anything like that. He was he was happy with doing what he was, they were, they were doing to just move forward and move ahead in their, you know, living in rural Connecticut.
Sounds like a pretty good outcome so far. So I, I enjoyed the, the conversation, the Conservation Commission regulations here, the right to farm. You know, section five, two, two, A, it's pretty clear. It's here and understood that such practices may include without limitation, the incident noise from livestock or farm equipment. So. But, you know, there is room to help out our neighbors somehow, even with such things. So. Thank you.
So I if I remember the conversations from past meetings, Donna's asking us to actually recognize that the crowing of a rooster is covered under the right to farm regulations. And so I would make a motion that we stay under the circumstance that a crowing rooster is covered by the right to farmer regulations. And that's, I think we should just make that recognize that. So I'm glad in this situation that the neighbors are on both sides.
So we should get us, if we want to move forward with discussion, we should get a second to this motion.
So I'm sorry, what? So the motion again is we're.
A motion to recognize that a crowing rooster is covered under our right to farm ordinance.
Second.
I don't, I don't think we need to make a motion to confirm something that's already in ordinance. This seems redundant.
I think, I think what it is, is that if you look at the last paragraph, you have to determine whether or not this is a nuisance or not a nuisance. Under the right, under the ordinance. I think those, that's the words in the last paragraph.
I mean, you, you, you could have a situation where, you know, some guy is running his farm equipment at midnight. And that would be, might be considered a nuisance because of the time of day. You know, unfortunately, you can't really control a rooster. But it is, it is covered and I don't see it that we can consider to, you know, the noise from a live animal that's covered under our regulations is, is part of the without limitation. Part of the noise of a farm animal. So under this circumstance, it's, it's covered under the right to farm. And if you want to add, and is not a nuisance, you know. It's just a motion to recognize this.
Yeah, I think we, we should have a, an amendment to include that, you know, language about a nuisance so that it, you know, follows the progression of this number, you know, paragraph four, although I you know, pardon me, feels like through the conversations that I had that he was not really moving forward with. I don't have anything in writing, but he, the, the conversations that we had were that he was not moving forward with, you know, a dispute. But certainly if we want to make the motion, it just would be great to include the word nuisance.
Shall I rescind this, my second? To amend the motion?
Yeah, I would amend the motion to say that under our Right to Farm Act, a noise of an animal is, is covered and therefore is not a nuisance. Does that make sense, Glenn?
It was a little less tidy, but.
It's a big one.
Joyce, do you have a motion that is a proper motion there? We do, so what we should do is there, if you make an amendment, we should vote on the amendment, but we're, I'm not quite确定what the amendment is.
Do a whole new motion. So make a motion that the crowing.
We have to rescind, you have to rescind your motion. Thank you.
All right. So the crowing of a rooster is covered under the incidental noise from livestock in the right to farm ordinance and therefore is not considered a nuisance.
I'll second that motion. That was your motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Fantastic. Joyce, you all set with that? Yes, you are recording, so I assume you are, but I just wanted just double checking. All those in favor of the motion?
I, I.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Streetscape update. Mike Doherty, Rick and I had a, was that a I think it was about a two hour long walkthrough. We went pretty much from one end to the other. We stopped and had a conversation with Janet Skinner at the corner of Lane and Route Seven. Talked about the sort of how that walkway was going to connect in with the sidewalk at the front of her house. And Mike will be drawing up a you know, a detail for Mather. We, we hit a lot of spots. We had a, a, a lot of I feel like we accomplished a lot that we, you know, we're buttoning up a lot of things. We did have a communication from Katie Moore asking if we would consider a similar detail where at the Fife, we continued that concrete to the edge of the building at the Fife and Drum at the cost of the, the owner. Katie asked us to consider that for in front of the villager. So Mike is writing up that, drawing up that detail and they'll come up with cost pricing for that as well as the liquor store. The, the two pathways, the sidewalk does go up one of them to a certain amount. So that will all get, that detail will all get written up. And then shared with the, with Katie to see if that's what you know, she would have to be paying for the difference for that. Rick, anything, any other highlights? There are a few spots where there's a spot over near St. Andrews that it, it happens to span two concrete sections where there's some, something, whether it was a piece of equipment but took sort of a divot out of the concrete. So they're going to have to take those two pieces, those two sections out, redo those. There's a, a number of spaces along the granite where Mike and I and, and Rick were not thrilled with the finish quality and rather than have them tear it out and, you know, re demo. It, it's, it's acceptable. It's absolutely acceptable. But where will, Mike is noting those along the way. He and Joe are going to note a bunch of those sections and, and will be not paying them for those small sections along the way that don't meet the standard that, that, you know, we all agreed to. So they're continuing the buttoning up. Obviously, they lost yesterday, but they are moving to get, you know, these different sections. We, the front of the Firefly is going to be a curb cut for a driveway. The DOT is going to approve that. So that will be done, the difference because it, in the plan, it was a sidewalk, but now it's going to be a driveway curb cut. The concrete has to be reinforced. You know, it's a different, slightly different treatment that will be paid for by the homeowner. We have verbal agreement from them today. So we got a lot of these sort of small little outstanding pieces moving forward. Come Tuesday, they will be starting down at the intersection in front of Swift. They'll be moving forward. There is a rally on the fifteenth that I, I keep hearing fairly big numbers. So I have pretty big concerns about pedestrian safety. So we did talk about a plan and it's really going to be sort of a day by day next week. Plan so that there's no area near that Golden Falcon area, which is where this rally is planned for, where there will be demoed sidewalk, because that would just be incredibly unsafe for the amount of pedestrian traffic that we're anticipating. They will not be working on Monday on Columbus Day. That's a DOT blackout on those, you know, certain holidays. And I did have a call from Mike Govel this afternoon. He sent his regrets that he couldn't make the meeting, but he did want me to share a concern that he has about the the lack of a use of any safety fencing, that sort of snow fencing along the route where, like at the end of the day, if they haven't done the, the, filled in that pavement. So you have road and then maybe a, you know, foot, ten, ten inches to a foot deep. All they've been doing is putting the barrels along the route. He, he is insisting on, on he was, he was very confident in his desire for me to share this with the board. And I've already sent an email to Mike Doherty and, and talked to Mike Doherty and instructed him to tell Mather that for any of these areas that are have any trenching, that they need to put that snow fencing or safety, that orange stretchy fencing in place to really create a barrier. So just for safety, you know, if somebody fell because they were crossing the street and didn't quite see what was going on, it was at night, what have you. It would be, you know, it would be terrible to have somebody get injured and obviously a gigantic liability for the town. So Mike has been giving those, Mike Doherty has been given those marching orders and he'll be catching up with Mather in the morning on that.
So could I, could I, could I refer to the SLR letter of, was it September twenty second? I think you emailed us.
Their comments back.
Their comments back, yeah. And, you know, they were commenting on the Streetsgate Committee open letter of August thirty first. Just, just a few things to bring up. So let's see, the SLR response to number, the question number four. They just write, please note that the Connecticut DOT inspectors have noted no concerns with the placement or compaction of the base materials. So just, it's in there in the letter. Just want to reiterate that and, and to your knowledge, that is the case, right? There has been no concerns with that. Okay. Okay. And the other one was SLR response to question number three. I want to read this one, actually. Try to get this one around my head here. The curing compound was applied in a fine mist, which did lead to droplets of more compound in some location than others. The compound used is a wax emulsion that wears off quickly with UV exposure and foot traffic. The contractor has been directed not to continue using the curing compound that I suppose dries out the, the concrete. I know this came up before. So I guess my question is, the contractor has been directed not to continue using the curing compound. So I guess my question is, um, the contractor has been directed not to continue using the curing compound. Is there another curing compound or does that does there not need to be a curing compound now because of the weather or?
My understanding is that the, now that the weather has cooled, but Rick, if you can just jump in here.
What they were using was for during hot weather, so it didn't cure as quickly.
Okay.
The engineer determined that once it was staying below nineties, that they didn't need it any longer.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, yeah, that's all.
Great.
It was a good letter.
Seven point one three, the Swift House ADA checklist checklist for existing facilities review. So um Joyce drafted up what um is referred to as the implementation plan. Um. Thank you, Joyce, for compiling the however many seventy-four pages. I think that checklist is into a tidier document. Um. And I sent, I did some, um, made a couple of edits, sent it off to John Worthington. I heard from him this afternoon. So this will be on um the next meeting. It'll be in the folder for the next meeting. Um, I you know, I just didn't have follow up with um John. I wanted to, to get his thoughts on how, like, were we headed in the right direction as far as, you know, what it should include because he's, you know, obviously done plenty of these. So um. I'll get that over to you all and then um it'll be on the next agenda.
Great, thanks.
Conversation. Town Hall Large Meeting Room Video Conference System Update. Joyce, you want to jump in? Major room is looking really great.
Uh, we have most of the components installed. Uh, once the room was put together and the microphones were placed on the tables. Um. I wasn't happy with that, so I asked if they could be mounted up on the beams. So we're looking into doing that probably next week. Um, and then there's the coordination of the actual unit that controls the Zoom room. Um. Ucat Tech is still getting some additional training to schedule or to set up the calendar on that so that not only the Zoom room, but the actual use of the room all gets coordinated. Um, and there isn't uh too many people reserving the room at the same time. Um, and then there will be actually be uh board and commission training. So um a definite timeline I don't have, but I would say in the next few weeks, we'll be able to use the room. Oh, and the carpet was updated, changed the squares that were really bad and the whole room was painted.
It, it got a nice freshen up. It looks looks really good. And the configuration, if you're in Town Hall, poke your head in the door. Um. I think Joyce did a great job with the configuration. It's, I have never seen it configured like that. So it'll be, um, I think it's gonna be great.
Maybe we should have a Board of Selectmen meeting there soon.
Well, that's, yeah, that's my, um, I, I, I don't think we're ready for the next meeting to go back to in person, but possibly for the November one.
That'd be great.
Possibly. We'll see where the lines with the election and everything. So before I say that, what did you say Rufus?
I said I wouldn't be able to wear my slippers.
You could wear your slippers. We'd be okay with that. Um. And we are on public comment, number two. Let's scan the room.
Lynn has her hand there.
Hey Lynn. Hi, I've been really good and kept my mouth shut a whole meeting. Um, I got a couple of questions though. Um. Going back to your discussion about traffic enforcement in the report. Um, I'm wondering what data is actually available to us from the state police um about specific requests for service that have been performed by uh the resident trooper. Um, or in specific to Kent, you were talking about data maybe from the state police, but to, can we get data about Kent? Because when Trooper Fisher was first, first came on board, the town was provided with specific data and then he stopped doing that. Um. And my other question is, um. How much of the cooperation with the state police that, that you described is due to the goodwill of Andrew Fisher? Um, because Kent's history was that the trooper prior to him was not that responsive to the town's needs. So the town opted to discontinue having a resident trooper. And I'm worried if we, you know, if, if we lose him, are we gonna be in that boat again? Uh, of, of not real, I mean, I understand what you were saying about the current situation is very good. But that's something that for you guys to be thinking about. How much of it is, is really about his goodwill?
Yeah, I, you know, I think the, the fit has, with Andrew has been a positive, productive fit. Um. I also, I know that if we were, you know, if on the great day when Andrew says I'm retiring, gotta find somebody else to do this. Um, the, the troop does want to provide us with a, with the right fit, with the right trooper for our town. The, you know, the right trooper for our town is not necessarily gonna be the right trooper for I don't know, Colchester or, um, you know, Norfolk. Um, getting, getting a good fit is definitely something that the lieutenant and I did talk about and um, you know, in relation to like the SRO position. Um, and you know, there will be a day that Andrew will retire. Um. So I, I do think that much of it, you know, Andrew is really good at community policing and community policing is all about the relationships and the preventing of crime from happening by building those relationships. And that's, you know, that's a, a a standout for Andrew. Um, that, that has, that we have benefited from because he is, he's really good at building those relationships and building lots of different relationships. Um.
So that kind of begs the question, Jean, at that point, how much input does the town have in picking or choosing?
So it goes through an interview process?
Trooper.
Yeah, so would, it goes through an interview process. Um. Do we get to pick? No.
Probably not.
We don't.
We have input.
Right, there's a million other variables that are going on. Um.
Seniority, just that, the other thing.
Right, seniority, other union um pieces. Um. Who applies? You know, who's, who's at the level that would apply, could apply. Um. So there are, you know, tons of variables. They, they do want us um engaged, obviously. Um. And we would be for sure.
Hopefully that won't be for a while.
Yeah, fingers crossed. Did that answer your question, Lynn?
Yeah, um, I do have another question regarding noise. Um, because I know the committee talked about this early on and is there a state law regarding noise that the troopers are empowered to enforce? Without having, without the noise ordinance thing that you were talking about.
I, I think there are certain decibel noise levels that are in the state. You know, you've got vehicles that are running too loudly, they can be taken off the road. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'd have to get back to Lynn on that specific question of are there, you know, is a resident state trooper responsible for noise, you know, a state law about noise? Is that sort of your question?
Yeah, I mean, the fact that he has a decibel meter says to me that there, there must be some noise regulation that he's able to do.
Yeah.
Cause you did say that, right? Didn't you say they have decibel meters?
I did not say that.
Oh, I thought.
I, I had a
Oh, it was Rufus that said, yeah. Okay. Um, and on another topic, uh, land use assistant. You guys never really talked about how much is in the budget line for the land use assistant right now and what how much was the previous hourly amount? You guys never talked about that. So is the new proposal higher? Or is it within the, within the budgeted amount, I guess is the question.
Give me one second. I can speak to that if you'd like.
Great.
Thanks. So the low range is the current amount that the previous um clerk was being paid. The high range is the highest range of an assistant in this building currently. So those, that's how the numbers were developed. So there's currently an assistant in another department that's getting paid that high range number. And the low range number is the clerk job as it was written previously.
So that means the budget is based on that low range number then?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah.
However.
Hourly rate is twenty-three-ten.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Any other hands doing a quick scan? Don't see any with that. Apple says it's six oh two and before Joyce, before you stop um recording, um. I think technically this is um Donna's last Board of Selectmen meeting that we see her in this capacity for now, for, I don't know, however, she's going on an exciting vacation, I hear. But I just wanted to say great thanks for many, many years of all the work that you've done in land use, slogging through um what you've slogged through in the last two and a half years during a pandemic. Um, that alone, you know, is big gold star moment. So I just wanted to make sure we give you a shout out and, and a big, um big thanks.
Thumbs up.
Thank you, Donna.
I will um make a motion to adjourn at six, at eight, uh, sorry, six oh two PM.
So moved.
Thank you. I'll do some favor.
So.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.